Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Thursday, September 4th, 2025. I will note for the record that here in the NatU Hill Room, we have Commissioner Madeira and myself, Commissioner Thomas, and we have Commissioner Jones joining us virtually. And we will begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We believe in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we do have an amendment to our agenda.
I would like to amend the agenda to add item J on the Justice Center and DLZ schematics.
Any comments or questions? Okay. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on amending our agenda to add item J?
I will, but I didn't know who seconded it.
I thought I did second.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. All right. We will now move on to department updates. First, we have the Health Department. Ms. Kelly is joining us. Thea Teams, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. As of August 26th, emergency department visits for COVID-like illness have continued to increase. Waste water surveillance levels are now high and trending up, but levels are still below peaks in previous years. Our public health clinic currently has the 2024-2025 COVID doses for those 12 and older and the seasonal flu shots. The CDC's Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, who develops recommendations on how to use vaccines, has meetings scheduled later this month. It's expected that they'll be discussing new COVID vaccine recommendations. Our public health clinic has vaccines available. You can call 812-353-3244 for an appointment or more information.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Madeira?
None. Thank you.
No, I don't either. Just please keep us updated on the vaccine protocols once they're issued. Thank you. Next, we have Chris Myers, Rural Transit.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm just here for the quarterly update for Rural Transit and to answer any questions you might have. We have trip data for January through July. You'll remember that our fiscal year and our grant year is the calendar year and not our agency's fiscal year. So we have seven months of data and four county system. We have 26,006 trips total. Monroe County was 10,464, and those are pretty much almost exactly what they were the same time last year, which is good. And we're not seeing a decrease in anything, but you know, I think we have started to plateau at where we were prior to COVID, coming back. In addition to that, the urban parallel system that we run for just Monroe County urban area, January through July, had 3,570 trips, which is also almost exactly what it was the same time last year. A month and a half ago, we received the capital replacement vehicles that we had applied for for 2025. We received two new 16-passenger-plus-wheelchair-lift buses, and those are replacing 2016 vehicles. So we're very happy for that. Oh my, get those outfitted and on the road. And I wanted to share that at the recent North-South NDOT meeting, one of the things that was brought up by Todd Jennings for the fiscal year 2026 period for vehicle replacements, they're going to start holding the titles, so they actually aren't going to be held at the county anymore. And when he sends guidance, I'll make sure that you get that. But it's kind of a, you know, a new thing that they're starting where they're going to actually title it to the agency that's doing the operations and have a lien for NDOT. So then it's going to process. Yeah, it just went green and then black. Okay. So it's removing the county from that process beginning next year.
And could they insure it as well for you?
Yeah, wouldn't that be great? Because that was the other part I was going to say.
That's good. Sorry.
So no, our renewal for insurance happens on September 5th, and I just received the figures for that, which, you know, I mean, I'm sure you aren't surprised, but it went up another 16% for the vehicles, which is going to cut into the cost of what we have for our limited bucket for operations, unfortunately, but it's the reality of running public transit. So any questions from me?
Do you have anything, Commissioner Madeira?
Just, do we know why the insurance went up 15% or 16%?
It's just the way it is.
That's what I figured. Yeah.
Yep.
I know, I know, just as a general, you know, insurance rates went up across the United States in many sectors of the economy.
And public transit is one of those high-risk areas just by the nature of being on the road the way we are, unfortunately, at the whims of insurance, and I hate it. Yeah.
Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
Just thank you for the update, and I'm so glad you keep all of this going.
Yeah, so grateful for the urbanized area work that you do as well as the multi-county work that you do for Rural Transit as a whole. But so this will be sort of a, can we update you a bit?
Yeah.
So we...
I wasn't on prompt, but go ahead.
So we had a conversation with council at our budget work session. We gave them the 155 number, $155,000 for 2026, and I know now that that may be higher. So if you could send the new amount, let me know. But we, I kind of put a marker on the table because we have some shifts coming up in ARPA monies, so we're trying to figure out how to fund it best. But I, I put the marker on the table that this is something that we want to pursue.
You have a sense of whether that's going to be supported or not?
Never know.
I know. I mean, we're going to be coming into the last quarter, right? Before we know it, and so I just want to make sure that, I know you'll keep me posted, but I'll need to let the writers know as well and make plans for just notifying them.
Absolutely. As soon as we know, yeah. I mean, it still would be nice if Ellisville chipped in a bit, but you know, they've made their decision. Yeah, so that's my update for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Excellent. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, Ms. Ridge, updates, please.
Good morning. So we've gotten a lot of questions about two projects, big projects in Monroe County and the status. Fullerton Pike Phase III. It is tentatively for a ribbon-cutting next Thursday at 3:00. The weather's going to play a part of that, whether asphalt can be put down over the weekend. I'll keep you updated. Sunrise Greetings Court, that is also scheduled to have Duke turn on power on the 10th, and then Midwestern Electric to finish one to three days of work. We want to have a ribbon-cutting for that project also. So it's kind of a little race to the finish for both of these projects within the same week. So I will keep it, keep the public updated on our website and any, any public outreach that I can, social media. But yeah, I'd look for those to be scheduled in the next week and a half or so for both those projects to open up those roads to traffic.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't, but this is very exciting.
Commissioner Madeira? Go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead. Sorry.
No, nothing. Nothing.
Oh, I was just going to jump on Commissioner Jones's remarks and say that it's, again, just very rewarding to see these projects get done in the community. And I'm, we have some very exciting ones on our agenda here to start. And again, we have so many in our community that need to get finished as well. And I think that there are excellent examples of just partnerships between the state, the local community. Yes?
So yeah, it's, this kind of infrastructure is just, is vital for residents, for businesses, economics. It's, it all makes sense. And, and I know Ms. Ridge has worked very hard along with her staff to make sure these things happen, and that means years out starting that process. And it's been a long one. Fullerton especially, it's been a long process. So kudos to Lisa and her staff for getting this done. This is, it's a lot. All right. Okay, so let's see if any other departments have an update and come to the podium. Raise your hand on Teams. No? Okay. All right. With that, we will move on to public comment. This is time reserved for items not on our agenda. We ask each person to limit their time to three minutes and to please give us your name and county of residence before you speak. You may raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Nadia Lambden, and I am a resident of Monroe County. I've been here since 2012, and I currently work for Milliken Realty. I was a student and just stayed in town. But what brought me here today is I'm here on behalf of Ralphie Paredes. He was 23 years old and recently died after a two-month stay in the hospital. He was making a full recovery and expected to be released days before his death. So me being here today is not something that I expected or any of his loved ones expected. He died in a facility that usually doesn't experience death. So shortly after his death, I had to act quickly to pick up his body as this hospital didn't have a morgue. I was able to arrange this and make plans with the funeral home, and the family paid everything that they had at the time, which was $4,500. After I visited the funeral home, I was in search of assistance programs around town, one being the Van Buren trustees. I learned that the full amount of assistance was $2,965, and I was told it was a good thing that the family had made a payment to the funeral home, you know, prior to asking for this assistance. Because the family had used the last of their funds and paid more than the standard threshold, that was, they got approved only for $965 rather than the $2,965. I am just here today in one last attempt to appeal that decision. I'm looking for approval for the additional $2,000 for the family to pay for the remainder of the funeral services, which are on Saturday, September 6th. Thank you.
I'm really sorry for your loss, but we do have, there's a mechanism for appealing a trustee's decision.
Okay.
And that's not, it's not here and now, but, but it still can be done.
Okay.
Mr. Cockrell?
I would just owe you to go talk to the auditor's office, which is located directly below this one in this building. I, I can't remember who exactly handles it. They may send you up to talk to Anita Freeman, because I think she used to handle those.
Okay. I was like, I have an appeal form, and, and I just, it just said that the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, so yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate you, and thank you for coming in. I'm really sorry if you lost.
No, thank you.
Angie's going to look into it and give you some more info, but we want to make sure that you know it, that appeal can happen even after the service is Saturday. So it doesn't have, it doesn't have to happen before.
I guess they're just need the money by, I know, which I understand, but whatever we can do, I would appreciate.
There you go.
Thank you so much.
You have somebody waiting to help you.
Thank you for your time, and I think I might join these again sometime. It's nice to see what's going on in town. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. I am sorry.
Thank you.
Any other public comment for items not on our agenda? Okay, we will go ahead and move on to our next agenda item, please.
I would like to move approval of the minutes for August 28th, 2025.
Second. Any comments, corrections, or edits?
I think I set mine in.
I did not either. All right, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of the minutes for August 28th, 2025?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
I'll abstain. I wasn't here.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero with one abstention.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
I would like to move approval of the claims docket for accounts payable for September 4th, 2025, and for payroll for September 5th, 2025.
Second. Ms. Moser, please tell us all about it.
Good morning, Commissioners. The accounts payable claims docket for September 4th, 2025 totals $1,4,499.21. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The payroll docket for September 5th, 2025 includes $1,612, I'm sorry, $1,612,957.36 in direct costs, and the remaining $687,000, $687,002.54 were for indirect costs for a grand total of $2,299,959.90.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
I have none. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
All right, I don't either. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You may raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium here in the NatU Hill Room. All right, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of claim accounts payable, September 4th, 2025, and payroll, September 5th, 2025?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. I will note for the record that we have received a report from Waits and Measures for August of 2025. I so appreciate that he moved away from the mid-month to mid-month reporting. All right, we will now move on to new business, please.
I would like to move approval for Rose Painting Incorporated Agreement for the Convention Center light poles. Fund name, ARPA, fund number 8950, and the amount of $17,700.
I will second that. Mr. Kreider?
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Monroe County Building Fleet Manager. I believe this is the last time I'll come see you about a Convention Center ARPA project.
Wow.
Yeah. This request is to accept the proposal submitted by Rose Painting, Inc., in the amount of $17,700 to prep, prime, and paint 20 light poles located in the West Overflow Lot at the Monroe County Convention Center.
Wow. We should, you know, commemorate this with something, but I don't know how you do that. Although ARPA's not going away, we've got some other discussions to have in the near future. Thank you for bringing this to us. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Madeira?
Nope, just a bright idea.
Ah. Any public comment? Not on the pun. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the agreement with Rose Painting, Inc. for Convention Center light poles, please?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
I would like to move approval for ratification of the High Tech Crimes Memorandum of Agreement renewal for 2026 and 2027. Fund name, High Tech Crimes Unit, fund number 9159, in the amount of $285,000 annually.
Second.
Second. That was a second. Is Ms. Allen here?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Excellent. Yes. Thank you so much. Please tell us all about this.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. This is the memorandum of agreement, request for signature. The memorandum of agreement is between the Commissioners, the Prosecutor's Office, and the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council. The contract amount is for $285,000 annually, and this contract is for a term of two years that begins on January 1st of 2026. It's for the administration and maintenance of the High Tech Crimes Unit, and the High Tech Crimes Unit serves Monroe County, Bartholomew, Brown, Green, Jackson, Lawrence, Marion, Monroe, or, sorry, Morgan, Orange, Owen, and Washington County. Happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
So our High Tech Crimes Unit is a hidden gem, literally. It is hidden back there in Ellisville, and it is something that we should all be very, very proud of. It enables us to do a lot of good work for a lot of counties, and I'm personally very, very proud of it and honored that we have it within our borders.
Yeah, Levi Minnick administers it. He does a great job.
Yeah. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I agree with all that Commissioner Madeira said, and I was very supportive of this right from the beginning, and I believe we've seen this for a few years now.
Yeah, that's really good. Great work. And let's see if there's any public comment on this. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the ratification of the High Tech Crimes Memorandum of Agreement renewal for '26 and '27?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item, please.
I would like to move approval for the Blue Stone Service Agreement Amendment. Fund names, County General and Parks, non-reverting. Fund numbers 1,000, 1178, and 1179, in an amount not to exceed $70,000.
Second. Second. My mic is kind of funny. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jacob Trustee. I'm the naturalist from Monroe County Parks and Rec. I'm not Kelly Whitmer. She couldn't be here today. So I came here to bring this amendment to you guys. Our Parks Board agreed to it. We have agreement with Blue Stone Tree Care for $70,000. This is for normal tree care and emergency situations throughout the next two years in all of our properties, including the Huntington property that will be, yeah, turning into a park.
That was my question. Great. Thank you. So any comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Madeira?
Nope. Again, just very important to have it there in place for emergency situations as we saw a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, that's true. Good point. Yeah, and it's, it's nice that it's also extending out to the new Monroe County Nature Preserve as well.
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes.
All right. I appreciate you coming in. Thank you. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Blue Stone Service Agreement Amendment?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
I would like to move approval for the ordinance 2025-25 to amend ordinances, speed limit 86-09, no trucks 89-01, stop 86-06, and yield 86-12.
Second. Ms. Ridge?
Good morning. All of these items went to the Monroe County Traffic Commission Board. They are also warranted by the MUTCD of the Indiana version. We are amending 86-09, which is the speed limit ordinance to decrease Ison Road, State Road 45 to Tower Road, Fullerton Pike, Leonard Springs Road West, Gordon Pike, Dlap Road from Mount Tabor to Woodall to a 35 mile-per-hour speed limit. We are amending ordinance 86-09 to delete 30 mile-per-hour locations at Gordon Pike, Roger Street to End of County Maintenance. We are amending 86-09 to add the following 30 mile-per-hour, Dlap Road from Woodall to Maple Grove North. Amend 86-09 to add following 25 mile-per-hour location, Ison Road South, which is Tower Road to the End of County Maintenance or Dead End. Amend 86-09 to add the following 20 mile-per-hour location for Chumley Road. Amend 86-09 to delete the following 20 mile-per-hour speed zone, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM school days location, Gordon Pike from Wickens to Roger Street. And to amend 86-09 to add the following 20 mile-per-hour school zone, 7 to 4, school days location, Fullerton Pike from Wickens to Clearview and Gordon Pike, Clearview to Rogers. We're also amending the addition on 89-01 of a no-trucks location for the Ison Road, Tower Road to Bridle Path Trail. And we are amending 86-06, the deletion of a stop location at Shiloh Road eastbound for John Young Road. Amending 86-12, which is Yield Sign, and it's an addition of a Shiloh Road eastbound for John Young Road. I think that's all of them.
Okay. I, let's, let's see if my, I have a question, but let's see if my colleagues have questions first. Commissioner Madeira?
I have none. It was a tour around the county to look all of these up.
Did you drive every one of them?
I did not.
Oh, okay.
My eyes did, but.
Okay. Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, so because we don't have the ordinances in front of us from 1986, what a good year it was. But it appears there's some duplication, but maybe not. So if we're deleting a 30, let's take Ison Road South. If we're deleting a 35 mile-per-hour location, but then we're adding a 35 mile-an-hour location on the same road, but, but State Road 45 to Tower Road?
The Ison Road.
Yeah.
So we're actually dealing with the dead-end portion of Ison Road. So we're deleting a portion of that and lowering it to 25 due to the width of the roadway.
Got it. And, okay, and so that's the Tower Road to ECM.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, good, good, good. All right. I just want to make sure I understand, because it was like adding and deleting, but it was the same. Got it. Thank you. Perfect. All right. I knew you'd be able to give me some clarity. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in NatU Hill. All right, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2025-25?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
All right, next item, please.
I would like to move approval for DLZ Indiana LLC Agreement for...
Give us CINTAS.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would like to move approval for CINTAS Agreement for Highway Garage Supplies. Fund name, Motor Vehicle Highway, fund number 1176, in the amount of $225 average per month.
Second. Rich?
This is basically renewing our CINTAS agreement for the next five years, and there was no price adjustment. So we went ahead to lock in for the five years instead of the three that we previously had.
Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Madeira?
No, I'm sorry. I cleaned this off our agenda early, so.
Just a housekeeping item. All right. Okay, let's see if there's any public comment not about the puns. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on this CINTAS agreement for Highway Garage Supplies?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item.
I would like to finally move approval for DLZ Indiana LLC agreement for Old State Road 37 South and Dillman Road Intersection Improvement Project. Fund name Old State Road 37 South and Dillman Road Intersection Improvement, fund number 8191, in the amount of $539,650.
I will second that. Ms. Ridge?
So we were awarded this project. We went through the MPO for the funding. The agreement is for the design phase of the project, and 90% is funded through the H-SIP funding, which is Highway Safety Improvement Program. The proper RFP process, since this is a federal aid project, was followed. We basically advertised through NDOT the RFP. I believe on this project, we received maybe eight RFPs. We have three scores that read all the RFPs, score them individually, then we bring those together and tabulate the highest ranking firm. We send all of the documentation to NDOT for processing and for their review and approval, and this was the process that was followed for this project along with all of our federal aid projects. So we have various different consultants for all of our 15 federal aid projects. As you can see, the MPO NDOT funding for this project is allocated at $481,500, and the local funds, which is out of the local road and street fund, is $58,150.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madira?
Thank you for that explanation of how these contracts are awarded. I think the public doesn't always appreciate that, you know, how this process is a lot of it out of our hands, and also how the process is different for all of these various projects, especially when it's a federal project versus, you know, a state match. This is also a very sorely needed project. I think, you know, this is right where the recycling center is, and this is a bridge that is frequently used. We have, this is a back way for a lot of people to get around. This is right near a trail, and so this is a bridge that is frequently washed out, I think, as well, so.
So that's, that is our Bridge 83 replacement project, and this is at the corner where the Duke plant is, Bloomington Mulch, across the highway.
Right.
It's right where the NDOT just put in a J-turn on 6937. So yeah, it's in coordination with all of those projects and the bridge project across the road, so yes.
Yep. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Intersection, then the bridge.
Yep, yep. It's all part of the same. It's all part of the same line. Yep.
Yeah, excellent.
It's been due for a long time. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
I'm just glad to see this work being done.
Yes, for sure. And again, another project that has been a long time coming that Ms. Ridge and her staff have worked on diligently and followed through on everything in a timely manner, and we appreciate that, especially with $58,000 in local funds versus 90% paid by the state. So, good thing. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the DLZ Indiana LLC agreement for Old 37 South and the Dillman Road Intersection Improvement Project?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madira?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
I would like to move approval for the Indiana Railroad Permit for Eagleson Bridge Tree Removal, fund name cumulative bridge, fund number 1135, in an amount not to exceed $5,000.
Second. Ms. Ridge?
The permit agreement is for the, for Monroe County to conduct the minimal tree removal for the Eagleson Bridge Replacement Project. We will receive quotes and contract that out. We are planning on doing this tree removal on October 10th, when IU is closed for their one-day fall break. End Day End Railroad is waiving the permit fee. The cost is not to exceed $5,000 if we need to have flaggers during that tree removal on the 10th.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Madira?
No, just I love the fact that this is minimal tree removal, removal, so, which is also minimal cost. Good on both counts.
Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Indiana Railroad Permit for Eagleson Bridge Tree Removal?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item.
I would like to move approval for the Sourcewell Quote from Blue Energy Equipment for Fuel Station Repairs. Fund name Local Road and Street, fund number 1169, in the amount of $92,173.
Second. Ms. Ridge, one more.
Well, two more.
Oh, two more.
So this is a quote, "Our fuel station wiring has been in existence since 1995, since the facility was constructed, so we're starting to experience a lot of issues with that. So we received this Sourcewell Quote from Blue Energy Equipment that's done repairs on our fuel station. I do have it on the September 16th, 2025 council meeting to create the account line and the additional for the repairs."
Thank you so much, and every department uses this. It's, yeah. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madira?
I have none. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Any public comment on this item? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Sourcewell Quote from Blue Energy Equipment for Fuel Station Repairs?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. Now, the last item for Ms. Ridge.
I would like to move approval of the Monroe County Policy for Speed Humps.
Second. Ms. Ridge, tell us all about it.
So we originated this policy in 2007. We were unable to find the record of the policy actually coming to the Commissioners' meeting for final approval, so we wanted to update the policy. Periodically, we get residents in the county that want speed humps put into their subdivision to control speed. So we spent, send the speed hump policy to them. It's up to them or their HOA if they want to follow the guidelines in the policy for installing speed humps. The county highway does not install speed humps. It's not really friendly to our snowplows, for sure, but we try and address the different questions that the residents across the county have, so we share this policy with them. The Traffic Commission Board reviewed the policy. We made minimal changes, updated some suggested changes from them, and they voted on it on August 21st, 2025, so we wanted to bring it to the Commissioners for final approval.
I'm, I'm not one that likes to put an obstacle in the way of a smooth roadway, but here we go. I'd like to make a motion to amend this to include approval by the Board of Commissioners, much like we just did stop signs, speed limits, school zones, yields. I think this is something that needs to come to us as well. So I would like to make that motion to amend, if Ms. Ridge is okay with that. All right. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Okay. So first, Commissioner Jones, comments or questions on the amendment or on the policy as a whole?
Both seem like a good idea to me.
Commissioner Madira, comments or questions?
No comments or questions.
Okay. So I, I don't really have a specific language, but I think it's pretty standard. Yeah. So first, we'll take public comment on the motion to amend the speed hump policy. All right, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the motion to amend the Monroe County County Policy for Speed Humps?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madira?
Yes.
Motion is appro, motion to amend is approved, three to zero.
All right, thank you so much. So any public comments or other comments from my colleagues on the overarching policy? I like the way that it really says the neighbors have to want it.
Yes.
And that there is a process and a procedure, and it's very clearly laid out, very easy to follow. So I just don't know that many people want them in their neighborhoods, and there, sometimes there are other options. Any, so any public comment on this? All right, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call on the, call for the role on the amended Monroe County Policy for Speed Humps?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great, thank you. Now you may take a breath and a breather, and we will, we have one more item. Please.
I would like to move approval of the schematic design phase as presented by DLZ and WGS on August 29th, 2025.
The other part of it is to.
Oh, and to, and to approve DLZ and WGS to commence the design development phase.
Thank you. I will second that. Thank you so much. All right. I don't know if Mr. Cockrell wants to say anything first, and then we'll invite Mr. Carnegie to the podium as well.
I would just say, as the motion indicated, that there was a pretty thorough conversation on the 29th. Any public who wishes to review it, it's on our website, as well as some of the exhibit that was referred to throughout that presentation. So I've asked Mr. Carnegie to give a brief statement and then be here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you so much. Good morning.
Good morning. All right, so Scott Carnegie, project manager with DLZ, Bloomington, Monroe County resident, joined here also by representatives from Little Garment Smoot. Just to reiterate again, I know that I've said this multiple times, but I think it's important for you to understand the process. So as standard in any design project, there's three primary design phases. There's schematic design, design development, and construction documents. After that, it moves into the bidding phase, which then obviously leads into the construction phase. So on Friday, as Mr. Cockrell just explained, we presented the first of the three primary design phases, that being schematic design. Each phase requires a presentation and owner approval before we, as a team, can proceed to the, to the next design phase. So we're here today seeking approval of the schematic design presentation, the information that was given to you on Friday, August 29th, and approval to commence the next design phase, which is the design development phase.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Madira?
I know there is considerable debate right now about the budget and about the design. We know that it's important to move ahead, and we know that there is a legislature that's looking at us to move ahead, and so we need to send a very clear message that we are moving ahead, and I think this is the clearest way to send this message, so.
Yeah. We have some speed humps from the previous item, given to us by the state legislature, which are now three that we know of, that will make it very difficult for us to proceed. But I think we need to proceed, and we, we are working on the other aspect of it, but it's, it's, I don't, I don't want to hold up this process. If we get through the legislative issues from the state, for the public certification, what does the rest of the timeline look like if everything goes swimmingly?
Very good question, Julie. So I'm referencing the timeline that was included in our schematic design packet last Friday, with approval today on December the 23rd, and I'm looking at ANG because I've already gotten the, the comment about December 23rd, when we would be presenting our design development package again, you know, to the county. That, that date, we can shift, but.
Good.
I just put something on the calendar. So that would be, and then if we receive design development approval, then we have construction document presentation to the county and for approval on June 23rd, 2026. Receive bids August 2026. Begin construction in October 2026, with construction substantially complete in June 2029.
Oosh. A lot. That's a lot. All right. So let's go ahead and see if there's any public comments on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the acceptance of the schematic design phase for the Justice Center and the commencement of the design development phase?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. I was not ready for announcements, but here we go. This will happen. All right. So just a reminder that residents are invited to sign up for our alert system, which will keep residents informed of emergencies, weather emergencies, road issues, as they may be, emergencies, et cetera. Just go to our new website, ian.gov/county/monroe to sign up right from the homepage. And while you're there, take a look at the calendar. There are six different office hours available on the, on the calendar for residents to meet with us individually, and I know there's one tonight, because that would be mine at a late hour of 8:00 PM, so. Also, we have, we are always accepting applications for boards and commissions. Go to our new website, ian.gov/county/monroe, and take a look at the available board and commission seats, and some things may not appear to be open, but will be at the end of the year. So with the new year, there are always new appointments, so we do encourage folks to apply for any and all boards or commissions you're interested in serving on, and we do appreciate the contribution of our residents, their experience, their talent, their time to help us make a better Monroe County government for everyone. Do we have anything else? Commissioner Jones, anything else for the good of the order?
No, I don't. Thank you.
All right. We do not have a work session today, so our next meeting is Thursday, September 11th, 10:00 AM, right here in the Nat U Hill Room. Thank you, everyone. Be well. We're adjourned. We're adjourned.